Good morning. It is Monday, June the 22nd, 2020. A couple of minutes after nine o'clock. I apologize. We're trying to get everybody situated today. We have everyone's social distance and spaced apart here, but the courtroom is probably as full as I've ever seen it since this COVID pandemic. Having said that, the Kerr County Commissioners Court is now in session, and Commissioner Harris will lead us in the prayer and the pledge. Please stand.
Lord, we've come to you today, and we ask that you watch over our first responders, both locally and statewide, and especially nationally. They come under severe attack each and every day. I know their families worry every time they leave the house. So, Lord, watch over these fine men and women that protect us, as well as our first responders in the fire department and everywhere else. Lord, we thank you for putting us here in the Hill Country, somewhat shielded from a lot of the national news and what have you and the ongoings, a lot of civil unrest. So, we ask that you watch over everybody and give our leaders in Washington some insight and give President Trump the strength to continue on. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I think it's obvious that I have my mask back on today. My wife asked me to do this. She's still convalescing. The next part of our agenda is the public input. I know someone I know wanted to speak. We need to get that form. On the public input, let me remind you that if what you want to speak on is on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called. The things that can be -- you can use to address the court with right now are things that are not on the agenda. We ask that you identify yourself by name and address, assuming to which precinct you live in, and limit your remarks to three minutes. You got it? Okay. Just pass it up. Just pass it. While she's doing that, I want to remind everyone that if you want to address the court, you may call 830-792-6161, and that phone will ring right here at the bench, and we'll take your call. Okay, this is Ms. Feeny. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You may approach the podium.
Good morning, Honor. I would like to request a--
Go ahead and give us your name and address.
Oh, my name is Far Feeny. My address is 130 Mark Drive South, Kerrville, Texas, 78028. I'm not sure what precinct that's in. I'm here today requesting to be on the agenda for next week regarding a ban of fishing at Flat Rock Dog Park. I would like to request that no fishing at Flat Rock Dog Park.
Okay, so you're just requesting that that topic be put on the agenda for next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we can accommodate that. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Next time, just call that one in. That's a lot easier to call that one in than have to come down here. Okay, Commissioner comments. Let's kind of start in reverse today. Let's go with four.
Okay. We need some rain. A lot of fuel out there in the pastures and the fields and everywhere, and we need another shot. It looks like we've got a chance this week, and keep your fingers crossed. That's about all I have right now.
Good. Three.
A couple of things. I had to miss the workshop last week, so I did have some updates as to what was said, things of that nature. But a couple of comments related to that. One, I applaud the judge for looking at the budget and with a light of what are our required functions. I think it's good for us to understand that and look at that, but I don't always agree with that, the other side of that. And I think that this -- so it's on the record that I like the idea of going towards ESDs with firearms. I think that's a good direction long-term, but I'm in favor of funding, and it's going to take several years to get there to commitments. Though, you know, this year, I think there's certainly a substantial amount of funding should be in the budget, in my personal opinion on that, and then on the debt services as well. It's a -- it's a department that was created seven, eight years ago, something like that. We thought about it long and hard when we did it. We did it largely because of the feeling that we have so many veterans in the community, and also that the more funds that we can get, federal funds that those veterans are entitled to, that we can get to them, the more it will help or it will be spent locally for the most part, and it's a boost. It's like economic development almost. And I think that has worked. Certainly the veterans feel that way. So, I think that's a department that even though it's not required, there is a reason for it. Those are two comments based on that workshop that I had this last week.
And for those that want to comment on that, that's on the agenda in item 1.22. We'll talk about that later this morning. Okay, two.
The alcohol beverage sale petition drive in Precinct Two is going well. I think we've got about 800 signatures. Don't forget, we need -- this is year 2020. We need 2020 signatures. So, it's lots of activities all around Precinct Two, and hopefully, we're going to get there. But, that means we need a couple of hundred signatures every week between now and mid-July. I thought we could -- when the last time I mentioned August the 1st would be the cutoff date, it's actually July the 17th.
Oh, wow.
Because the way the law is worded, the tax -- the voting people, okay, they get -- they're required to have 30 days to verify the addresses on the -- or the people on the petition are valid. Holders of voting rights. So, even though they probably won't meet it, probably do it in a couple of days, that's what the law says. So, we got truncated by about two weeks of the process. So, that means we got to really get it. And people are doing everything in the world they can. We just have to -- hopefully, we'll get there.
If I remember correctly, you are about at 600 and some odd.
No, 800 now.
No, last week.
Last week, we were 656 or something. So, roughly as of yesterday, about 800. So, got a long way to go.
Okay. Precinct One.
Not a lot to report, but this last week, there was -- there was something that came up with our emergency 911 system. I just want to encourage everybody who has private property that's not county maintained. You cannot be told you have to have street signs and markers, but if you'll put one up in those troubled areas, it sure makes things easier for our emergency workers to find you. If it's the sheriff's department, if it's an ambulance, if it's a fire truck, it really -- I've been in some areas checking them out lately because there were some disputes about street. It helps you and it makes all of Kerr County safer. The sheriff can tell you. It makes everybody safer if it's clearly marked. And I know they have all their GPS stuff and all of that, but just like cell signals in the Hill Country, those can be lost, and it can be pretty confusing in the middle of the night. So, if you've got one of those areas you live at, you should put a sign up yourself. That's all.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and move on to the agenda. Item 1.1, consider to discuss and take appropriate action regarding the update, facility use, and other matters related to COVID-19. Deb Thomas, our emergency management coordinator.
Morning, Judge. Morning.
You got a haircut.
Yes, sir.
Look sharp.
Got a beard a little bit. It feels good, too. I'm going to get right to it. This is week number 16 for our COVID situation report, and our numbers practically, for all practical purposes, have doubled over the last week. I think I spoke too soon last week when I said we've been doing really well. We hadn't had any numbers COVID-positive for a week, and then on Thursday, we got slammed. So, currently, we are at 46 total. I believe the number is 13 active. One of those is in the ICU at Peterson Regional Medical Center. So, one of the things that I wanted to inform the court about is testing, or I'm sorry, not testing, but the way DSHS, of course, their numbers is going to change significantly over the next -- well, it's already changed as a matter of fact. So, we're having a meeting this afternoon at 3:00 to discuss how we want to report our numbers so that they're more timely and a little bit more accurate than what DSHS has given us. For instance, I got a call earlier in the week for case number 22, and they said in four days, that case is going to be -- needs to be taken off the record because it will have been two weeks, 14 days is generally the time period for the virus. So, that means for 10 days, DSHS had sat on that case. We had no idea about it. They were unable to contact the individual, so they just never, never gave us the address till it was finally, you know, 10 days in, which doesn't do me a whole lot of good, and it gives me some concern because our first responders may have to report to that address for anything. It could have been fire EMS or police department, and they have no idea of knowing that that address is COVID-positive or COVID-advert because we are keeping those addresses in our CAD system, both at the county and the city level. And that is going to change as well with DSHS. They're no longer going to notify us of the addresses for those locations. So, our first responders, first of all, need to consider every call, a COVID-positive case, and we're going to be trying to work out some ways where we can still get those addresses. Peterson Regional has taken some of that information down, and if they can give me those numbers and those addresses, we'll continue to put them in CAD for first responders because just the notification from DSHS is going to take a little longer. They can no longer do these investigations within 24 hours like they've been wanting to. They've been getting 75 to 100 cases per day, and they just don't have the number of personnel to conduct all those investigations. So, it's running behind. Going to go to aggregate reporting. It's a little bit different. We're going to see some numbers on the DSHS, the Region Eight report is going to change. You will see a block on there for cases that are under investigation. So, we're going to add that in there, and it's going to be a little bit different for our reporting system. But I want us to be able to meet this afternoon, myself, Peterson Regional, all of our PIOs from the city and the county as well, Peterson Regional, the Kerrville Fire Department, their EMS, and we're going to work out a method for us to report our numbers that are a little bit more accurate and a little bit more timely than what DSHS has given us. So, right now, we stand at 46, but I can assure you, we have more coming. We have so far Kerr -- Peterson Regional's done 1,583 tests. Texas Military Forces, 386. Our nursing home numbers have stayed the same. COVID-positive is 46. 46. Our infection rate is 0.17. I expect that number to rise. I think by the end of the day, I'm going to look at seeing probably seven or eight more cases.
Deb, is there any trend as to where these new cases are coming from, or is it just random?
I think it's just random. I think part of it is, once the state started opening up, people were starting to travel. Not only travel, I think people started meeting with their neighbors. I've seen some of these addresses that are within two or three houses of each other, and I guess they decided that it was time to go meet your neighbors, have a party, do whatever. And so, there's been a lot of it passed around. There's a lot that's been close contact. We've got two residents I know of that have at least two individuals in that residence with positive. One has three. So, I think some of the things you're starting to see around the state, I know Beyer County has gone to a mask order for restaurants, basically cooks and waiters, waitresses, waitstaff, whatever. San Marcos has also done the same as far as a mask order. I don't know if that's what we want to explore at this point, but I think we still need to continue to stress that folks need to wear a mask, need to wash their hands if you're sick, if you don't feel well, stay home, use hand sanitizer if it's not available, because I can assure you, at this point, I'm at the point now where it's -- if you're in that age group or you have one of the underlying conditions, if you don't wear a mask, if you don't social distance, if you don't wash your hands, it's not a matter of if you're going to catch this virus. It's a matter of when you're going to catch it. And then it's going to matter on your current health. It's going to determine your survivability. So, that's basically what I had for this morning, other than our numbers for around the state. Everything's continuing to blow up. Texas has 107,735 cases. Total deaths is 2165. Total recovered, 67,096. Total testing is 1.6 million. The surrounding counties, some of that has started to blow up on us as well. Kendall County is up to 44. Medina, 75. I have Kerr County on there with 45. It's actually 46. Gillespie is going to 18. Bandera, 13. Kimball County is at one, and Real County has finally got one, one case. So, it's still moving west, and we're still going to see a lot of -- I think we're going to see a lot more COVID-19 cases here. The DSHS Region Eight numbers, active are 3929, recovered 3,718, deaths are 130, and they have 227. That's a number that I'm going to continue to put on there now because that's what they're going to be putting out. And so, we have 227 cases in Region Eight that are pending. 11, I know Kerr County has 11 cases pending investigation.
So-- Deb, I'm questioning -- you don't have the answer, but on the mask, looking for my see, different types, any mask or certain mask?
At this point, I'd say any mask. A cloth mask like he is wearing, N95, surgical -- N95, like what the judge has on, surgical mask, anything as long as it fits rather snugly, and then those will be fine. But if it's -- if you're not wearing it properly, it's like a seatbelt. It's not going to do you any good.
So, those that are, I guess, labeled dust masks are better than--
I would say it's better than nothing, but a dust mask is not going to stop the molecular size of a COVID-19 virus for a particular mask for somebody that's working on a construction Any other questions?
Anything else for Deb? We appreciate your diligence. Keep up the good work.
Monday mornings are a little --
Okay.
Gets a little hectic. Have a good day.
Thank you. We're going to skip down to the timed item at 9:15. That's item 1.3 on your agenda. Consider to discuss and take appropriate action to approve a resolution recognizing Bill Wood for his service on the Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board. Commissioner Moser.
Thank you, Judge. We've said many times what the airport has done in being a major asset for this entire community, probably in ways that are not quantified. There are a lot of people that come to Kerrville with expensive planes and big jets and spend a lot of money, and that's never captured in the real value of the airport. Because of what the Airport Board has done in the past number of years, going from a major deficit of $400,000 a year, which the city and county had to make up, to where it's revenue neutral now, Bill Wood has been recently the president of the board. He's been on the board for a number of years, been very active and contributed in many ways. And with that, there's a resolution that I would like to propose that the county adopt, and I'll read the resolution if I may into the record. Recognition of William Wood's service for Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board and Kerr County. Whereas, Bill Wood has served eight years on the Kerr County Joint Airport Board as a member, and this year is the board president. He worked to develop and approve budgets whereby the revenues generated at the airport were greater than its expenses. Whereas, under his leadership, the Airport Board, with participation of the city and the county, worked to develop a strategic plan for 2019 through 2023 for the airport. Whereas, he has been an active member in the Kerrville Civil Air Patrol Squadron for five years. His primary role is the public information officer, and that has led to the unit being far more visible to the Hill Country. In addition to serving as a pilot and public information officer, he coordinated Civil Air Patrol flights for Tobby House School ROTC detachment. Bill continues to be very dependable, useful member of the Civil Air Patrol. Whereas, he is a board -- he -- whereas, while he is on the board of the airport, he uses engineering and managerial skills to develop two T-hanger projects and other runway improvement with grants from TechStop. Therefore, Kerr County Commissioners Court does hereby thank and recognize Bill Wood for his dedication, leadership, management expertise, and valuable assistance in making Kerr County Kerrville Airport one of the best general aviation airports in Texas and a valuable and important asset for Kerr County. Signed, adopted 22nd day of June 2020. So, with that, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Most have been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to adopt the resolution recognizing Bill Wood's service to Kerrville-Kerr County Airport Board. Any discussion? Those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0.
Thank you, Bill.
We'll get this up. Get a sign right here.
Yeah.
Bill, I want to say something.
Well--
Come up to the mic.
It's been a labor of love. Best board I've ever served on, and you've got a good president coming behind you. And we have a wonderful airport manager, Mary Roar, and appreciate -- actually, you know, we work for you. We work for the county and the city and all the citizens of Kerrville, and everything Tom said about the airport is absolutely true. It brings in a lot of folks. I mean, you've got ranchers that bring in all kinds of guests at night. You've got the camps. I can't tell you how many times I've seen a big jet come in and one little girl with a suitcase get off. And there's a lot of stuff happens out at that airport you wouldn't really believe, and we've had some very famous people come in, come through here. And I think it's a credit to Kerrville, and it's been a great eight years, and I'm sad to leave, but I've had times that, and you're in good hands. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb, we've got the -- Jody's going to bring the resolution back here to give to you.
We don't have a photographer, do we?
No.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Bill, why? It's okay, Judge. He can come up here.
Sure.
Here, we can get a good picture. Jonathan and Warren, come up.
I'm going to shake your hand anyway. I don't get to shake many hands.
One, two, three. Got you.
Congratulations.
Did you get him? Did you get it, Mark?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
It's a pleasure.
Let's go back up to 1.2 on the agenda. This is the one that I put on the agenda every week now. I signed the proclamation declaring a state a disaster due to public health and economic emergency. Back on March the 24th, we renewed it on the 30th with a provision that says it would be extended until terminated by order of the court. So, this is the opportunity for us to discuss, do we still want to keep the state a disaster? And I think we do. With the way things have doubled here in the last week, I think it would be imprudent to not continue.
Judge, I could add just a little discussion. I think you know this, but on Wednesday afternoon, I think at 3:00, there'll be a kind of those city, county, all of the emergency management folks are having a Zoom meeting. And I think that it'd be good to give the judge who participates on that guidance as to what direction, change, if any, we should do. I really don't think there should be any change, not any, but I thought that'd be a -- ultimately, he's the -- well, he gets to make that call, but I thought I'd just put it on the table.
And to kind of inform the public, there's been a lot of discussion this past week. I think everyone's well aware of what San Antonio, Beyer County, and Austin, Travis County have done, and the meeting they had with Governor Abbott to explain -- for him to explain the meaning of the order that he's entered. San Antonio and Austin issue -- well, somebody's calling. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I am. I'm just looking at the address.
Okay. I'll go ahead and put you on speakerphone. We're in the middle of the court session. You'll just have to listen to us for a little while before we get to that item on the agenda, okay?
Okay.
No, that -- go right ahead. This is TCDRS calling in for the later agenda item. But what I was explaining is the distinction that Nelson Wolf and Ron Nuremberg did in San Antonio is they put an order for businesses, not individuals, to provide masks for their employees and for the customers, and require that they wear masks while in their establishments. And that is not an individual mandate. That is a commercial business mandate on those businesses. So, consequently, I've gotten a lot of calls, a lot of emails. Just something for us to consider. The other thing that I've had people ask me about, which I thought was unusual that it came up at this late date, can we -- can the county judge order social distancing? Because some people just aren't doing it. That's something for us to think about. Probably so. But those are just some of the issues, and I don't know what we're going to do on Wednesday, but I certainly welcome everybody to tune in and see what all the stakeholders have to say.
I would hope we leave it to the individuals. I think responsibility ought to fall on each individual. If you see a -- like this room, for example, you don't see enough masks and you're uncomfortable, turn around and walk away. I think that's the way it should go. And that's, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to leave this and not cancel this item once we got started because I didn't feel like we'd ever overreach, and in my opinion, that'd be overreaching.
And to follow up on that, if a business chooses to voluntarily require masks, that's their priority.
There you go.
The one thing that I've consistently told everybody through the weekend is I think that it's prudent to wear a mask in certain situations, and I think that's an individual determination, and that it's strongly recommended. I've talked to the mayor several times this weekend, and that's what we're doing. We're strongly recommending that you wear a mask in appropriate situations. And the other thing that I would share with you is we had some people this week, this past week, who refused to wear a mask when asked. We had some people who refused to quarantine when asked. Now, we're starting getting into some dangerous territory when that happens. So, that's just -- we do that on a case-by-case basis, but be aware that as this thing blows up, it is becoming more and more emotional.
Well, it would be different, and I keep reminding people of this. This is not a death sentence. There are plenty of people walking around that had it, didn't know it, got over it. There are people that have it now. They don't have any symptoms. So, it's not automatically going to kill you. So, that's where you get into real issues of telling people what they have to do when there's not maybe any consequence at all for them.
I agree. You know, our latest official numbers for our seasonal flu was 2018, and type A and B combined, we had over 900 cases. And I know for one myself, I've had it before and never got tested. Just knew that's going around and feel like heck, and you have it. And I think if the seasonal flu was--
We, we give, we give masks out to a lot of people.
Yeah, I think Costco requires going to the Costco store in San Antonio if you have a mask, so.
But as a county, we can help supplement that for them?
I don't know.
Is that what you're saying?
I think we've been giving out a lot of places, haven't we, Sheriff?
On what?
Masks.
We have, we've given, not businesses, we have given some to the school districts that, you know, needed it, had through our emergency management. We, you know, we do several thousand already.
Well, we might, we might look into whether or not we can, we can help these businesses if they choose to do.
We don't have the numbers now that we could. We have to try and get some more.
All right. I understand this is all ongoing, but. Okay, it is 9:30. Let's go to the 9:30 timed item, which is 1.8. And, and yes, if you would, please identify yourself again.
Uh, yes, this is Ann McGeehan, I'm the general counsel for the Texas County and District Retirement System. And also on the phone is Roxanne Aldridge. Roxanne, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, good morning. This is Roxanne Aldridge. I'm your employer services representative with TC DRS.
Okay. I'm putting it up closer to the microphone. I've got Ann McGeehan, who's general counsel for TD, TC DRS, and Ms. Roxanne Aldridge. And let me call the agenda item. It's 1.8, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve the 415 Agreement Qualified Replacement Benefit Arrangement for the Texas County and District Retirement System. Jennifer Dawes, HR Director.
Good morning. Last, last Monday, you asked these ladies to call in and give you further clarification. So, Ann, can you provide, I think we provided you the three of the questions that the court had. Can you speak to those?
I don't think she could hear you.
I don't think so. You're a little small.
Can you hear?
I'm sorry, no, I didn't quite hear that.
We sent you three questions last week.
I don't think she can hear you.
Why don't we just reiterate the question for her?
Please.
The three questions we had from last week, can you tell us about those, Ann?
Oh, okay. Um, I know, I think the first question concerned the authority of the Internal Revenue Service and the context of the qualified exit benefit arrangement for the legal basis.
You know, let, excuse me, let me interrupt. This is, this is Rob Kelling. Let's set the stage, the public, that we're coming in on this mid-thought, and from last week. Jennifer, if you could restate what the, what the proposal before the court is so that the people know.
Okay. The 415 agreement allows the county to make up the difference when someone retires, their pension is greater than the IRS guidelines allow TC DRS to pay. So this agreement allows the county to make up that difference, and then we reduce what we pay the monthly contributions the following month by what the county has paid. So the county will not be out any additional funds.
Well, but, as I understand it, we have an employee who qualifies to receive more pension than is allowed by TC DRS. Is that right?
Correct. If they retire today.
So Judge, this is Roxanne. So it's not that, first of all, our actuaries run future projections of employees that might possibly be affected. And so they run this every single year. One employee down the road right now could be affected. If we run this again next year, this employee may or may not be part of the impacted group. You might have one or two more employees, or zero on a minimal basis. So this is a dynamic list that's going to change every single year. And the limit is not set by TC DRS, it's set by the IRS. And basically, I think the email that we sent out is just at age 62 for the limit, which is the current limit for that, is $230,000 for this year, set by the IRS. This limit changes every single year, but it also changes depending on age. So the younger the employee year is when they retire, the much, much lower the limit is also going to be. So depending on the actions that this employee may or may not take, they might or may not be affected by it. So it's one of those things where, one of the actions, one of the questions that the court has asked was what options does, does the county have? And the county options are, you do not have the finest agreement, or if you want to set it in place for potential future employees that might be affected, you also have that option. So I just want to stress that it's not something that TC DRS has in place. We just received it straight from the IRS.
Well, as I understand, we have an employee who, if they retired now, TC DRS would not be able to pay them the full retirement benefit that they have earned according to the county's benefit system. Do I understand that correctly, Ms. Dawes?
It's not if they retire now, it's if they retire in, I want to say, five years, is when our actuaries ran, our outside actuaries ran this hypothetical scenario. So in five years, again, the limit could change. Also, what it's based on is the single life option, which is the highest dollar amount that someone can receive when they retire, because we don't know who their beneficiaries and who they're, there's no way we're going to run it for all seven options.
Okay. Could you, could, excuse me, could you say that again? The single life, what is it?
It's based on the highest payout option that someone could select from at retirement.
And, and what are we, what are we specifically looking at here? What's the highest that this employee could, could receive if they retired?
So we don't know what it's going to be in five years. And I don't even, like, we don't really run it as far as this is estimated for the potential employee. I can tell you, at age 62, the limit right now for this year is $230,000. The limit could be higher next year, as set by the IRS.
So somebody would get a retirement of $230,000 a year? Or is that just?
At age 62.
At age 62.
Is that per year?
I'm not, I don't understand.
If this, if this person were age 50 for this year, the limit is $105,000, for example. So significantly lower. So it changes based on their age at retirement.
Is the amount you're referencing, the 205 or the 230, an annual amount?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let's see. If, so there is a limit on how much a Kirk County employee can get in retirement based on the IRS. Some complicated thing based on what they choose and what their age is that they retire and have progresses till then, correct?
Yes.
And so this employee, according to our system, is, should be able to get more than what the IRS says that they can get, correct? Okay. And if that's the case, the county can, can make up that difference, but at no cost to the taxpayer. That's the part I would understand, Jennifer.
Correct.
So.
Yes.
How does, how does, how do they, how do we get that additional funds to retirement for that employee at no additional cost to the taxpayer?
When we send in our.
So when Jennifer sends in her payroll every single month, she'll just subtract the amount of getting paid to the employee from payroll.
Oh.
So if, yeah, it's pretty, pretty simple, making it, you know, yeah, pretty simple transaction.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If it doesn't cost us anything, you know, the taxpayer's anything in the long run, then it's like we need to.
So there, there's this limit set by the IRS. The person can increase their, their retirement funds based on their own contribution, okay, to that fund? Because you're taking it out of their salary, right? And putting it in?
Yes.
No? Where's that money come from then?
No, I guess, yes. So this is, they're not getting, this is, any employee works the same way, where 7% of the paycheck they receive from the county goes into their individual account, it earns in compounded interest. And then at retirement, it gets matched by the current match that the county's offering. So when you have someone who works a very long time, they start young, they put in a good amount of time, and they also get, you know, regular nice pay increases, potentially they might hit this limit down the road.
Okay, I got you.
Potential.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 415 agreement with TC.
DRS.
DRS.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Moser, to approve the 415 agreement with TC DRS for the additional contributions to the retirement program for this individual. Is that what it is?
It's not additional contributions. It's so that we can, we can pay the difference after, I'm not great at explaining, I'm sorry, but after TC DRS pays what the IRS limits that they can pay, we pay the remainder, and then we reduce it, as they explained, our future payroll contributions to TC DRS by that amount that we pay that employee.
Does that employee's entitled to?
Correct.
And it's not limited to any specific employee? Is it any employee that may?
Anybody that falls into this situation in the future.
To me, the, the, when I was hearing all this, it was confusing what made the difference to me. That money is sitting there at the retirement system. It is there, it's just the retirement system cannot pay it to the employee, and so they look to us to make that payment, and so we get reimbursed because of the money is there for the employee already.
Okay, got you.
So that helps me understand it just a little bit.
And that's because there's a cap?
The IRS caps it, not us, not the retirement system, it's IRS.
Correct.
Very good. Very good. Got it.
Any other discussion?
And we have to have this agreement in place for that.
For us to be able to do that, correct.
And what happens if we don't?
Excuse me?
What happens if we don't have the agreement in place?
Then we just, we don't get reimbursed. We just have to pay it out of our general fund.
Costs the taxpayer.
Right.
The county's taxpayer, sure.
Yes. Our local.
If, if there's no agreement and there, there's a potential retiree in custody, then we'll stop paying them when they reach the limit, and they will not receive any more monthly payments until come January of the next year, when the brand new calendar year starts.
And so that, and under this example that we're talking about here, they'd max out this year at 105? $105,000 worth of retirement?
That was a projection or a possibility, not firm numbers, I don't think.
Well, I kind of feel like $105,000 is pretty good retirement.
But if they pay, but if they're owed, if we owe them $110,000, we owe them $110,000.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yes, this is, you're not paying them additional money. If somebody has a benefit that, for example, amounts to a total of $110,000 a year, you're going to get limited to $105,000 because of this IRS regulation. So it's not extra money. This is money that they've earned while working for the county.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. And it's named 4-1, 4-0.
I appreciate everybody helping to explain, or I do.
Yeah. Team effort.
Thank you, Mrs. McGeehan and Ms. Aldridge.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that was 1.8. Let's go back up to 1.4, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve Customer Service Agreement Between Kirk County and UniFirst for the Maintenance Department. Shane Evans.
Morning, gentlemen.
Routine contract, looks like.
Sir?
Routine contract?
Yes, sir. For floating and masks for the, our facilities.
How does that, how does this compare to previous contracts? Is the same company, same amount, basically?
Basically, I mean, I think they do reserve the right, period of basis, 36 months, to increase or something. Yes.
But it's basically the same type of contract with cost adjustments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second. Looks good.
Motion's been made.
I want to ask you a question. Has anything changed because of all this from our, in the contract, in the cost?
No.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the county's contract with UniFirst. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, unanimous. Item 1.5, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Trash Cans at Brink's Crossing. Commissioner Moser.
Thanks, Judge. There has several of the residents in the area of Brink's Crossing, at the Guadalupe River, has indicated that there's a lot of trash. People are using our trash barrels effectively, but the trash barrels are not a sufficient volume, all the trash, so they're sitting it beside the cans. So they're reckon, and even though there's a joint project between UGRA and the county to empty the trash cans, I think UGRA empties them on Saturday and Sunday on the weekends, and Shane and his crew empty them another time during the week.
Mondays, Mondays and Fridays.
Mondays and Fridays. So the recommendation there is to add additional trash barrels there so that the trash is not sitting beside them and, and getting into the river, which is against that. So I would make a motion that, and I don't even know if a motion is necessary, but to have Shane look at the, what would be required to add a couple of additional trash cans there in Brink's Crossing so that we can contain the trash. People appear to be very responsible in picking up their trash, it's one of the places to put it.
These are 55-gallon cans?
Yes, right.
And we're looking at maybe as a minimum of one more trash can per side, maybe two. Now, they, like, like Commissioner Moser has stated, they are bringing the trash to the trash can, and my guys have stated, even though they've done that, I think we have hundreds of hostums getting up to it, scattering it out, so they're spending more time picking up the loose, loose garbage also, to get everything cleaned up. So we need a minimum of one per side. If there's a trash cans on both sides of Brink's Crossing.
I don't know if that takes a motion, or if it's in your budget to do something like that, if you want to look at it and.
It won't be that much. We, I've already started looking into, the 55-gallon barrels are probably $30 each. The lids are going to be added, the, the good durable lids for that is going to cost more than the trash, the 55-gallon.
Sure. I don't know that this requires a motion. In my mind, this is just an expansion of.
I think so.
A brand of parts to pick up trash.
Yeah.
It's not a part, but.
So this, this is in response to that, so if you can do that, if it doesn't fit the budget, then.
So we receive that as information?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks, thanks, Shane.
Do you want to withdraw your motion, Commissioner?
I didn't make a motion. I just, okay.
I did have a motion.
Pardon?
Talking about UniFirst.
Yeah, I second, you had a motion, I second.
On the trash can?
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion, no motions neither. Okay? No actions either.
1.6, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve the County Treasurer's Office Pitney Bowes Postage Machine Lease Renewal. And have the county judge sign, say.
I read you did.
That, that's routine.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the renewal of the lease. Any discussion?
I've got one question.
Here's Tracy.
This is, this is, Pitney Bowes, I mean, do we have that for each, multiple departments around the courthouse, and is there any benefit of consolidating those?
We've talked about this before, but each department head has the plan and say, what they do and who they're contracted with. We talked about trying to do it and get them all in the same.
I didn't remember that discussion. Okay. All right. I've got my question answered.
Okay.
But there, there's several departments, you know, a lot of them.
Right.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the renewal of the Pitney Bowes lease for the treasurer's office. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous five, zero. 1.7, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve Holiday and Payroll Schedule for Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021. 1.6, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the county treasurer's office Pitney Bowes postage machine lease renewal. And have the county judge sign the same.
I heard you did.
That, that's routine.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the renewal of the lease. Any discussion?
I've got one question.
Here's Tracy.
This is, this is, Pitney Bowes, I mean, do we have that for each, multiple departments around the courthouse? And is there any benefit of consolidating those?
We've talked about this before, but each department head has the plan and say what they do and who they're contracted with. We talked about trying to do it and get them all in the same.
I didn't remember that discussion, okay. All right. I've got my question answered.
Okay.
But there, there's several departments, you know, a lot of them.
Right, okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the renewal of the Pitney Bowes lease for the treasurer's office. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. 1.7, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve holiday and payroll schedule for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Ms. Coss.
Good morning. I shared these dates with you in your packet, and the holiday schedule is identical to last year, same, same number of holidays, and the payroll schedule just coincides with the holiday dates.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the holiday schedule as proposed. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, skip down to 1.9. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the memorandum of understanding concerning communication and coordination between Centerpoint Independent School District Police Department and the Kerr County Sheriff's Office and allow county judge to sign the same.
We've already had one of these in con, in existence, but they change their police chiefs for the school district, and so we'll just renew it. It just gives them access for law enforcement purposes to our radio system and our dispatch since they don't have a one or two man department down there.
Should this be renewed annually?
Uh, I don't think we've had to renew it annually, as long as we've got it in, in the.
You have to have the new officer name in it.
Yeah, that's, and it is. He signed off on this one. The judge has his original, and I just ask that he be able to sign it.
I'm going for approval.
Sorry. I nitpick. The, the resolution is a memorandum of understanding, but it talks about interlocal agreement.
It's, the county attorney's looked at it. It is kind of one and both. It's an agreement that, that he, at times, say there's something that goes on right out in front of China Street. Okay, that school is on both sides of the road. So sometimes he will also be able to assist us. That's a memorandum of understanding. And then the, or an interlocal agreement, he can help us, he's still a peace officer for the state. And then as far as using our radio system, that, that's more of just the memorandum of understanding part of helping that. But I don't have a problem with it anyway.
It's okay? All right, good enough. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second pending. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Next item on the agenda is 1.10. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the construction contract change order number three for CDAP, C-E-D-A-P, Colonia Economically Distressed Area Program, grant number 7217045. Mr. Letts.
Is on the agenda, I'm trying to hear. It's a change order to, basically it's modifying some length of sewer lines, asphalt repairs, it's not increasing the budget, it's moving some funds from line item to line item within our contract. And make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Moser to approve the CDAP construction contract change order number three. Any other discussion?
I was making note, the total amount of the change order is $8,570.30.
Okay.
But it doesn't change the budget?
No.
No.
No other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0.
Did you want to take a break?
We're going to take a break. I'm trying to race up here to get, get to our council so we can take a break and get, move on.
Okay.
1.11, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the committee's recommended modifications to the Kerr County longevity policy.
The committee met as a moving committee. We never all met together, but we communicated with everybody. And the general discussion, or basic discussion was that until the salary survey is done, there's a recommendation not to make any major changes to the longevity policy. There is one slight recommendation that may or may not help, in my mind it would, it should make things a little bit easier, and that is to, anyone whose anniversary date, which is when you get your longevity increase currently, if it's in the first quarter of the year, it would be effective the first pay period in April. If it's in the second quarter of the year, it's effective this first period, fourth pay period in July and so forth. It makes it so that they're all done at one time, it's a little bit easier from a record keeping standpoint. We have had issues of missing some of these in the past, so I think it helps there. And it also does have the benefit of a slight budget impact improvement for this year. Don't know exactly how much, but it would be a positive to our, it's not going to really impact the employees that much, but it will of the county, because, and the reason for that is the third quarter payment this year would be rolled into bottom budget here for the first time. So I will make a motion that we, despite modification to our longevity policy, that the payments, the minimums in the first quarter, you pay the first pay period in the second quarter, and those in the second quarter, first pay period in the third quarter come through the year.
So do we take any action?
Yeah, I think it does. It's changing, because right now we're paying them the longevity, it's our anniversary date.
Correct. We talked about that happening starting in the next fiscal year, I don't know.
Yeah, it would take place in the next budget year, I'm sorry.
Part of the budget.
Yeah.
What does that do for the, for those two pay periods? I want to ask the county auditor, I'm sorry. What, what does that do to those two pay periods in terms of cash flow?
Well, it's all.
Have you looked at that all?
I have not looked at it. Figuratively, what you're doing, where you normally would pay longevity, like, starting October the 15th, say, you're not going to make that payment now, start that grace is what it ends up being until January, the first full pay period in January. So it's going to defer what you're, for three months, almost, the amount that you're paying out.
So it's half the county on one, half the county employees on one, half, the other half on the other?
I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, if everybody, why? If everybody's date gets changed, that would cover everybody in two.
No, it's not two, it's every, this is every, longevity right now is done on your employment.
On the anniversary of when you.
And this changes it to the quarter after your anniversary date, so everyone gets it same time. So the impact would be, you would assume, you know, it's going to, some people are going to be delayed a day.
Well, let's say that three quarters of the county falls under one of those.
I don't understand that. Everyone will fall under everyone. I mean, it'll affect every employee.
I know that. Those two days, it's not split 50/50. I'm trying to figure out in my mind, how many employees are you talking about on each one? We don't, we don't really know.
There's some that would start, say, January long, there's some that would start March 13. Some people would wait, you know, one pay period, others would just wait three months on a pay period.
Right. But all of them are going to get paid on a certain day, a certain pay period. That's what I'm asking about.
It will add to their pay period from then until the rest of the year. So it will still continue to be in addition to salary, it's just we're deferring when we'll start paying that.
Right, I get that. I'm just curious how many we have in those two different dates.
When you say two different dates, I'm confused. So what is that?
You said April 15.
But it's all, it's April 15, it's, it's the first quarter goes in the first pay period of the second quarter, second quarter, first pay period of the third, third, first period of the fourth.
It's going to affect different numbers of employees.
But you assume, we assume that you, we have 300 employees, that we have, you know, a quarter of 300 every pay period, every quarter. I mean, I don't know that's exactly.
But, but the only ones that will be affected this year with the longevity pay are the ones that have been employed one year, four years. So you're, it's, it's only a certain percentage, because it's every three years. So it's not 100% of the employees will be affected this year. It will only those that reach those time limits this year.
That's what I was asking, but do you have any idea what percentage that is?
Of the number of employees or the amount paid?
It'll be affected in the first, if this is adopted, the first pay period after that.
I can get back with you on that because I do not know off the top of my head. I've seen the schedule that was based on the old way, but I do not count the number of employees.
Okay. I'd be curious to see where they're going to fall because you have a big, you know, million dollar paycheck or something, pay period. You don't want to have something like that, like.
Well, it's not going to, it's going to lessen next, every, our payroll for next budget year, not increase. It's going to be less, whatever it was, it's going to be less.
They're not dealing with it week to week.
It has to be. We're not changing longevity policy. If you're, those that were going to get longevity next year are going to get longevity next year.
I get that, I understand. But you're, you're going to, whatever percentage of them that is, is going to start on a certain day.
But they're going to get it a little bit later than they normally would have.
Right. But still, that's, they're still going to get it. It's all going to be on the same day.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about. So it's going to be cumulative, and all of a sudden, floodgates open, I'm just curious about that.
Because if, instead of like, if, if you were going to receive, let's say, you normally were paid $1,000 and now you're going to get $1,010, just throw it out there. That $10, instead of taking effect on the 15th of October, the $10 will not be effective until January. So, so whatever, and yes, you may have 10 employees that may get that $10 more, but overall, you're going to get less for the entire year.
Okay, so really, we're cutting it in half. Instead of everybody starting in October 1, you're staggering it. Is that the idea? Was that the point? I'm trying to figure out the point.
The point is to have it, because we've had a number of employees that we've missed their anniversary date, and this is, makes it consistent, we're doing it four times a year now. Longevity increases are not done every day that someone, like right now, if, if you start the, or started the first of January, well, maybe that's, well, probably not good example, because you start first of January. Kelly started January 15th. Well, her pay gets right now, gets adjusted on the 15th. And that might be in the middle of a pay period. So you've got to go in and work, this is making it so, everyone in that first quarter, you're getting the first pay period.
Now that makes sense. It really coordinates it.
The benefit, the added benefit is, it will save us a little bit of money, but to me, the reason for it is much more simplicity in accounting.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
Sorry, I didn't explain it.
Well, as it is, with 300 employees, you could have, and Jennifer would know this, you could have an anniversary date on 300 days a year.
Right.
So, yeah.
You don't have to deal with it every day.
I just didn't want us to have two pay periods where we go bang, that slings the calendar. So that's what I was hearing from the first quarter. No, I get it.
Sheriff.
My only concern is I don't see it being fair to every employee. Say you've got an employee that starts two days after the beginning of that first quarter, okay? His, his longevity increase will not go into effect until the second quarter, right? So no matter what, he loses those months that he worked, okay? Now you've got an employee that starts two days before the end of that first quarter. His longevity goes in effect two days later.
That's luck of the draw, I think.
Well, it may be luck of the draw, but, but we have a form that says it should, I didn't know, and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, I thought right now they're going into effect at the next pay period. It's not on the day of the, it, it's, it's actually begins, you know, like the next pay period. So you're not having to figure it for a 10-day period. You're figuring it at the next pay period is when it should be taking effect. And every department head has a form that we already fill out and send to HR with the effective date, and what it, whether it's longevity, whether it's educational, whether it's promotion, whether it's whatever, that changes that. And I, you know, I just, at one time we did them in the past. I think it was yearly, or we did them, you know, and it really ended up not being fair to all employees. And I think if you're going to do it, you need to make it fair to all employees. And the only way I think you can come close is at the beginning of the next pay period and use the forms that we've been doing and show when it is. Unless it's just over saving money.
I don't think it's just saving money, it's saving and accounting and figuring and everything else.
Or, or another train of thought is, you know, we wait until the salary study's done, and if, there will be changes at that point, so we'll just look all the changes together instead of changing now and then changing later. That was another.
Yeah, that's it, that's something we talked about, not do anything right now, just do it all, that salary study. Where the committee's pretty unanimous, there will be changes to longevity policy recommendations.
Yeah, because then you call it maybe a stipend, and wait until then and see what the old salary study does. It's going to be.
That's fine, sir. This is just one that helps budget-wise and helps simplicity-wise in my mind.
So do we take action or not?
Well, I think. And I make a motion?
I think you did, I think.
You have a motion?
I have a motion, commissioner, I think.
Yeah.
I seconded it, I thought.
Harris has a second, okay. Any other discussion about this? Those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Those abstained, raise your hands.
I don't get it.
Bizarre. Just putting it off.
Yeah.
Doing it all at one time. But it, it passes 2-0. It's time to take a break. Court's going to be in recess for five minutes, and when we come back, we're going to start back on agenda item number 1.14 and do the 10 o'clock timed items. Court is in recess. Court's going to be back in session. The next item on the agenda is timed at 10 o'clock, that's item 1.14. It is a public hearing regarding the proposed Kerr County Economic Development Program Including Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement Program. We have Mr. Chuck Kimbrough here, our counsel from Austin. I convene this public meeting and anybody here that would like to address the court regarding our tax abatement guidelines and economic development policy. Well, there being no one, then I'm going ahead and adjourn the meeting and we'll move on to item 1.15. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the approval of the proposed Kerr County, Texas Economic Development Program Including Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement and All Related Matters. We have a provision here to be able to go into executive session if needed, but I suspect we can probably get all this done in open meetings. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you. May it please the court, the public hearing is concluded?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on the action item.
Right.
The requirements of the law indicate that you need a written vote order, and I've provided the court with such an order with the proposed economic development program document attached as exhibit one. And then attached to the program order, of course, is the application form whereby a developer would, if it's approved, file like the, like the guideline says, fill out an application form and provide all the documentation, proposed application form is attached to the program instrument. And so I sent the staff and the county judge's office a collated document that has the order first and the program instrument behind it with a big black number on the right bottom side of each page, you know, 1 is the first page, and all the way to the end is page 40, 43.
And this is the same order that we worked with, that we approved, that we, we worked from last time?
Yes, sir. With the, you know, with the changes that we made for the public hearing draft that was ready for discussion on the previous agenda.[1675.66] was ready for discussion on the previous agenda.
Well, just, just for the sake of the Commissioners' Court, maybe, maybe you should recount the problems we had getting our notice out for the public meeting.
Okay, I will, sir.
Because we, 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 we covered our bases four ways from Sunday on this one.
We did.
That's a great way to describe it. The law oftentimes dictates what type of public notice predicate must occur to let you do something in court. Tax abatement criteria guidelines in 312 of the Tax Code has those rules. The legislature with a statute 412.002, subparagraph C dash 1, added in September of last year, added a requirement that before you enact Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement, change them, modify them, amend them, extend them, you must hold a public hearing. And I gave the county judge's office and the county attorney a big stack of stuff about what we did, and this is what happened. The current statute just says hold a public hearing. Now, there's another statute later on in the development process regarding tax abatement law. When you create a tax abatement reinvestment zone, if you do so after a developer files an application that says, yeah, I want to create a zone and I want to tax abate it too, to create the zone, there are special public hearing predicate requirements. You have to hold a public hearing before the zone is created. You have to publish notice in a newspaper at least seven days before the hearing. You have to give direct letter notice to each taxing entity that has land inside the proposed zone, okay? But that's down the road. That's, that's not on establishing guidelines, that's the public hearing required before you create a reinvestment zone. So you heard me on at least two occasions formally say, I don't know of any rule that says you have to do that extra notice to predicate your public hearing for guidelines. Well, on the 8th of June, I learned that the Texas Comptroller's Office had a difference of opinion. 8th of June was after I'd been here on May the 26th. So on 9th of June, when I got back to the office from West Texas where I learned about the guidance document at the Comptroller's website, I took a look, and lo and behold, the comptroller had a guidance document that says, hey, there's a new statute for guideline criteria of public hearing. You got to do that extra notice too, newspaper notice, and give the taxing entities written letter notice at least seven days ahead of time. So I called up Mr. Frank Alvarez at the Comptroller's office. He runs the tax abatement side of their work, and I visited with him and I showed him the statute and I said, it doesn't say that. And we've been telling clients all over Texas since the new statute went into effect, it's just a public hearing requirement, not that extra stuff that you use for zones. All you have to do to predicate hearing on the guidelines is open meeting act notice, 72 hours ahead of time on your agenda.
And his response was?
Oh, okay. I doubt I'm the only lawyer that called it to their attention, but, so.
So Chuck calls me and he says, we've got to do all these additional notices.
And Ms. Stevens.
And Ms. Stevens.
So the three of us, go ahead, Judge.
Well, they called and said, we've got to do all this extra stuff.
Maybe.
But he says, I think they're wrong. But it's on the website, so do you take the chance that they're wrong? So we did every single notice that they wanted us to do.
Yes, sir.
So maybe, Karen, what was on the website? The proposed?
Notice requirement. In order to have the public meeting we just had, we had to have all of these notices.
Okay.
Chuck told us, we just had to have, set it for a public notice for a hearing.
For open meeting act.
Open meeting act.
Way to do it, yeah.
And so the comptroller came up with, God, it was a list of stuff that we had.
What was on the website?
I gave.
All the list of stuff at these different places.
Okay.
Which we did.
I prepared all the stack of papers that we did, plus your internal notice documents on, you know, and there, there's an explanation on page 1.
That's this right here.
I gave you a notebook. And the comptroller, June 9 guidance document, the incorrect was on there. So we did, we put it in the newspaper, gave the notice, I made telephone calls, I did emails. We got it whipped by last Monday. We got it.
And the reason was, if I remember right, Chuck.
Yeah.
If we ever got challenged about the notice for our public meeting somewhere down the road, 10, 15, 20 years, they could come in and challenge it and set aside all the tax abatement and economic development that we've been doing for decades. So I told Chuck, let's be on the safe side, let's do it all, and we did that. And then what was it? Two days later?
All right, so I, so Monday, the 15th, was seven days before today, and that was when I was calling each entity and giving them an extra email, too. The letters were sent out Federal Express, and they all hit correctly, but I did the email because, emails to each of them because I was, you know, worried about Federal Express these days with everything that's going on. So last Thursday, what was that, whatever last Thursday state was, I decided, I might just look on the comptroller's website to see what's going on. They corrected it. Thursday on the 17th, they corrected it. So I called Mr. Alvarez again. I said, hey, I noticed you corrected it. And he said, yes, sir, thank you. So I didn't tell him what county I was working for, but.
But Kerr County is responsible for getting the comptroller's website straightened down.
But I want to caution you about something. Now, the law says when you establish guidelines and criteria for tax abatement, again, it's the statute that's been out there forever, 41, it's 412, Chapter 412 of the Tax Code is the tax abatement procedural part of our law. 412.002, excuse me, 312.002 is the Guidelines and Criteria statute. That's where it says you have to hold a public hearing if you're going to change your guidelines or revise them or extend them. And your guidelines last for two years. So like we talked about before, if you do this today with a recorded public vote to approve the Economic Development Program, which includes Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement, you have to put it on your tickler or your, the staff, the county attorney and I will be thinking about it for sure. Just think about that when the summer, when spring ends and when the summer comes around, your guidelines need to be reviewed. And when that happens, if the law stays the same, you'll have to have another public hearing. And when you do that, you can give extra notice if you want to. To put it in the newspaper and to give emails or direct letters to the taxing entity, it's just fine. You don't have to do it, but it, it sure is a good thing to think about doing in my judgment. And I told Mr. Alvarez that when we began to discuss the incorrect guidance document that the comptroller had up on June 9. I said, you know, we're going to do what you say because it, you know, it's good public policy, it's transparency. But technically, that statute does not require it at this point. Questions about notice? Any questions about the, you know, the program itself?
Was the policy that you modified based on our last public hearing?
Yes, sir.
That was posted on the county website?
It was. Now, I have your copy of the notice and the documented.
That was posted on the public website. Because people have called me and asked about it, and I said, it's, it's on the public, it's on the county website. It's there, based on the recommended changes that we made at the last public hearing, okay? So that's been there for several weeks.
Probably be around there.
Okay. So that is, if people, people want to see that, we just had a public hearing, so no one was here at the public hearing to make any comments on that policy, draft policy, reapproved policy, which was on the website, okay? Just want to make that clear. Okay, good.
I want to make sure you're aware of a sort of a nuance that we sort of brushed over the last time I was here. Remember that this document, on y'all's instructions, was to be a comprehensive, full-blown document that's forward-thinking, that combines guidelines and criteria policy, which is required for you to do tax abatement under 312 of the Tax Code, plus just straight economic development agreements that do not involve a tax abatement under Chapter 381 of the Local Government Code. Our law is, in my opinion, that you cannot charge an application fee unless there is a statute that says you can do so. The nuance between Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreements, Chapter 312 Tax Abatement Agreements is this. Chapter 312 says you can charge an application fee to cover your internal review procedures, internal costs of review, up to $1,000. This document says for tax abatement agreements, there's a $1,000 application fee, okay? But for straight 381 agreements, Chapter 381 agreements, economic development agreements under Chapter 381 that do not involve the tax abatement, there is no statute, to my knowledge, that lets you charge a fee for that. So how do you recover your internal review cost and a lot of times out-of-pocket cost, like attorney's fees and maybe consultants, maybe surveyors, you know, whatever they are on a 381 agreement? You negotiate that with the miller. Questions about fees? That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I will go ahead and make the motion that we approve the order as presented by Mr. Kimbrough to approve the proposed Kerr County, Texas Economic Development Program, including Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement and all related matters.
Second.
I made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Lutz, to approve the motion as presented. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. This is one that we all have to sign. I've already signed it, and we'll pass it on and circulate it. Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Court.
Glad we finally got this done, even though we did take the long way home.
The cost is a long one.
The cost is a long way home.
Brutal. Now we've packed some of this.
Okay, let's go back to item, oh, we've got all these 10 o'clock items. Let me do them. Next one is 1.16. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to set a public hearing regarding no parking signs installed. Is it?
Homelius.
Homelius Road, East Bridge, Precinct 3.
Good morning. On May 17th, 2020, Chris Summers made a request to Marshal Heap at the Texas Office regarding trespassing issues property owners were having along the Guadalupe Bay River near Homelius Road East Bridge. Mr. Heap then, once he realized that it was out of their jurisdiction, forwarded it to Charlie Hastings, the Kerr County engineer. We had spoken with Commissioner Lutz on this. Charlie and I had gone out and looked at it. Charlie has put a map in there for some no parking signs on the bridge. And so at this time, I asked the Commissioners' Court to set a public hearing regarding the installation of no parking signs at the Homelius Road East Bridge for Monday, July 27th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., and that's in Precinct 3.
I move to the public hearing.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz, seconded by Commissioner Harris to set the public hearing for July 12th. Was that what it was?
27.
27. Any further discussion?
I'd like to comment, this is a, it's a very small, it's a county bridge, County Main County Bridge, it's a very small road. Probably whenever, under the public's radar for years and years, they could even get there, but evidently people have found out and they are causing damage to people's properties. So, I believe they should probably put up some boulders along that edge of their property if they go to keep people out, but it's something that you can do, we've done in other areas, limit people abusing the roadway.
Okay, so this is just a motion to set the public hearing.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. 1.17. Public hearing to discontinue maintenance of portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane in Precinct 4. This is a public meeting that's now comes to order. Is there anybody who would like to address the court with regard to discontinuing the maintenance of portions of Riverview and Roland, Riverview Road and Roland Lane? There being none, then I will go ahead and adjourn the public meeting, and we will go on to 1.18. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to discontinue maintenance of portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane. Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. The City of Ingram has recently annexed portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane, which are now their ownership and maintenance responsibilities. In order to allow for the City of Ingram to fully serve their recently annexed citizens, especially with centralized sanitary sewer service, it is both necessary and prudent that maintenance of all of the said roads become their responsibility. The legal descriptions of both Riverview Road and Roland Lane are attached in your packet. According to Texas statutes, the court may order public roads laid out, discontinued, closed, abandoned, vacated, or altered. The statute defines the relevant term for discontinued, it would be to discontinue the maintenance of the road. The county engineer recommends that the court discontinue maintenance of the portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane that have not been annexed by the City of Ingram as of this date, allowing Ingram to have full control of all portions of both roads. This is in Precinct 4, and we're asking you to discontinue the maintenance so that they can have control of the entire sections of both of those roads.
I move for approval.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Moser to approve the discontinuation of maintenance of Riverview Road and Roland Lane, Precinct 4. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Item 1.19. Public hearing for revision of plat for Tierra Vista, lots 33, 34, 35R in the recreation area. Charlie Hastings.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing, okay. I call the meeting to order. Is anybody here that would like to address the court with regard to this matter? There being none, then the public meeting is adjourned. We move on to 1.20. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to approve a revision of plat for Tierra Vista, lots 33, 34, 35R in the recreation area. Charlie Hastings.
This proposal combines lots 33, 34, and a portion of the recreation area into Lot 33R. It also combines Lot 35R with a portion of a recreation area into Lot 35R1. Access to the lots will be from Tierra Vista. You have a plat in front of you, it's been assigned by everybody that needs to sign it. The county engineer requests the court approve a revision of plat for Tierra Vista, lots 33, 34, 35R, and the recreation area. Plat file number 16 dash 01809 and volume 4, page 94. This is in Precinct 1. We just have held a public hearing and nobody spoke.
I move for approval.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Valoo, seconded by Commissioner Lutz to approve the revision of plat as presented. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Our last timed item at 10 o'clock is 1.21. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on July 27th, 2020, for a revision of plat for Spicer Ranch, lots 25 and 31. Charlie Hastings.
Thank you. This proposal revises Lot 31, which is 12.087 acres, and Lot 25, 3.056 acres, into Lot 31R, 13.939 acres, and Lot 25R, 1.189 acres, with a portion of a recreation area. Lot 31R has a private water well and Lot 25R will connect to a public water system. Access to the lots will be from Spicer Loop and Trent Road. The county engineer requests the court set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on July 27th, 2020, for a revision of plat for Spicer Ranch, lots 25 and 31, volume 3, page 56, Precinct 1. I apologize, I said something about a portion of the recreation area that was not part of this plat. I'm using that with the last one.
I have a question for you, Charlie. This, we've talked to the folks at 911 about the street names here.
Yes, sir.
And is that going to change, is Tad or Trent, one of those going to change now?
Neither one of them changes. The way that they've got this plat is, is correct.
Will this have to be changed before it's in the permit court records?
Um.
Depending on what they do.
I don't understand.
Well, if they rename one of those roads.
They're not going to rename it. They've, they've, I think, we had a meeting the other day and they've already contacted the property owners and let them know what the names of those roads actually are based on a court order that the, the court went through years ago. 2001, I believe.
I move for approval.
To set a public hearing?
To set a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing.
Set a public hearing.
To set the public hearing.
So, Commissioner Harris, you going to second that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Valoo, seconded by Commissioner Harris to set a public meeting for 10:00 a.m. on July 27th, 2020, for a revision of plat for Spicer Ranch, lots 25 and 31. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. 5-0 unanimous. Okay, let's go back and pick up item 1.12 on the agenda. Consider discuss to take appropriate action regarding the projected reduction in revenue for fiscal year 2020-2021 and options that could be taken to accommodate any reductions. Commissioner Moser.
Judge, several court sessions ago, I asked the auditor, based on concerns that people had in the community about reduced revenue because of COVID-19 things, and if, if in fact, we did have a reduction. in fact, we did have a reduction in revenue, what would our course of action be to make a mid-course correction for the remainder of this year? Good news is, we're right on our plan as far as revenue and expenditures, and there's no action needed. This is just for information, but I don't know if the county auditor wants to expand on that, but I met with she and James Drobis this past week, and that is really good news for Kerr County. Okay, even though there's been a lot of curtailment in sales in different places, it hadn't affected our, I thought it'd affect our tax, our revenue from sales tax. It has not, so.
We took that temporary dip, and that's about it.
Yep, so.
Pleasant surprise.
It's a very good surprise. Somebody made the suggestion, and it may be true, that maybe more people stayed in Kerrville.
You sat in the home spot.
As opposed to, as opposed to going to other places, Fredericksburg and San Antonio, okay, to out to dinner and so forth. So, anyway, that's all good news. I just wanted to say I could close out on that discussion we had several weeks ago.
Very good. Then let's go to item 1.13. Consider discuss or take appropriate action regarding nominations for the Guadalupe Basin Flood Planning Group. Commissioner Moser.
Yes, thank you, Judge. It was brought to my attention by UGRA and some of the former members, Mike Allen in particular, a former board member of UGRA, about a Texas Water Development Board is initiating the activity for state flood planning activity. And it's, this is be the first time that there's been such a statewide plan developed. It's supposed to be developed by January of two thousand and twenty-three. The reason I bring it here today is, is for information, okay? And it's, there's two things that come out of this. Number one, there'll be a planning group which is established for fifteen regions in the state where flooding is a potential. We are in region fifteen, region twelve, which is a very narrow region, which goes, begins in Kerr County and goes all the way down to the coast, following the Guadalupe River. The Texas Water Development Board has asked for nominations for members of this planning group, of which there will be twelve members. The nominations have to be submitted by July the second, so.
Of this year?
Of this year, right. So, I'll go, I'm gonna come back to that in a second with a recommendation, but, and that is, it will be made up, and this group will develop the plan, okay? It is to be made up of people nominated for the group, and representing counties, cities, small businesses, environmental people, twelve different, twelve different specific groups that'll be in the planning group. There will be approved by the Water Development Board who these members will be, based on the nominations. There's another group that's called a, a sponsor group, okay? That has to be a public entity, like a county or a city, or an approved district like, or area like UGRA, and that nomination has to be manned by July second, too. I've had some dialogue with Ray Buck at UGAR on this, haven't had any discussions with the city. So, what I propose is, I will, myself and whoever on the court wants to close the loop with UGRA and come back to the court next Monday, okay, with recommendations on members for the, for the planning group, and also for who the sponsor should be. I'll also forward the link to Water Development Board, which delineates this activity and what the objective is. So, that's, that's basically what it is. It's, sorry for the short notice, but I heard about this.
Sure.
Just this past week. So, it, it looks like it's very important. It's the first time the state will have a statewide flood planning, flood plan, okay, for fifteen different regions in the state. So, I think it's an important function. The thing that the sponsoring entity will be, they will interact with Water Development Board for applications, or grant applications for funds, and they will also provide meeting places for the, for the planning group. The sponsoring organization will not have any say in the actual planning group activities themselves, so.
Hey, let me, these are being filed exactly after the regional water planning groups, the chair of, and the, the planning, the sponsor is actually, there will be termed the political subdivision, which UGRA is for Region J and the platform, planning group. That entity handles all the money, and all of the public, a lot of, you know, we're, Jody does, is the, then there's an administrative person, which is not necessarily that entity, which Jody serves for Region J, because I'm the chair, and this is, works out easy, you know, pretty easily that way. But, so the format's gonna be very similar to the region, well, it's gonna be exactly like the regional water planning groups. It is very important. I've been in communication with Commissioner Durden in Kendall County, trying to figure out who, what names should be recommended for what slots, so that there's as much as possible, no, you know, everyone's in agreement, and the more people, more entities that support the same slate of candidates, the more important it is, or the better likely to have people on that. So, I think it's a good, and it does, it would be my recommendation to submit the whole, all twelve members on a slate that we recommend.
Do they need to represent different entities?
They represent different interest groups.
Interest groups, right.
So, you could have, as an example.
So, it'd be ag business, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure of all the ones for this, but there's a public one. Don Durden recommended that he was interested in being a public representative. There will be a county representative.
Agriculture, small businesses, environmentalists.
On Region J, I'm actually, the small business representative, I'm not a county representative. The county representative is held by a real county. So.
Would the camps fall on your businesses, or if we had a camp representative, would that fall on your business?
They could be small businesses, they could be tourism.
Okay.
They'd probably be veteran or tourism, actually, than small business, so. Anyway, there's a number of interests, but I think it's, I've worked with Commissioner Moser and Ray Buck, and also Kendall County, to try to come up with a whole group.
We gotta come back to something next Monday.
With a whole recommended slate, and.
And how many counties are affected?
Our, this region.
Region twelve is probably fifteen ballpark.
It's less than that.
I don't think they have many counties.
I think it's only about six or seven.
All the way to the coast?
Yeah, but it's just right along the river.
It's very, it's very, very narrow.
Yeah.
I'll, I've already sent, I think, the website, you can go and you can look at the map and everything else, so it's got a short fuse on it, so. I don't know why we didn't, you know, we missed something or something. I didn't, I didn't know about it, and, well, fortunately, UGRA brought it to our attention.
Yeah. How do these things get established?
How is it that we don't get any kind of?
We did get, we had.
So, if the legislature did this.
It was established in last legislature session.
There's been a lot of notice, it's just that.
I didn't see.
It was, there was a whole public meeting at UGRA about this in April. R A doesn't afford all this, or it must have been in December period. And, you know, I guess.
Anyway.
It's been percolating through, it's just that it hasn't, you know, the, until they decided when the nominations are due, probably didn't, it's supposed to rise to the top.
Yeah, now something's happened.
Now something's happened.
So, this, this is for information, we'll be back next, next Monday. With recommendations.
Very good.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, let's go to item 1.22. Consider discuss or take appropriate action regarding the workshops held on June seventeen for volunteer fire departments and Veteran Services Office and future recommendations. I put this on the agenda so that we don't drop the ball. I know four of us were there, we're sorry you missed it, Commissioner Lutz, it was a robust discussion, both workshops, very long day. We have a lot of interested participants, it was very well attended, and what, a couple of the takeaways that I got that I wanted to share, because we're coming up on our first budget workshop on Wednesday, and, and going into budget season. When I first prepared my proposed budget, I put, I distinguished between what were necessary services that the county needed to provide, that were required to, were mandated by law to do, and what is not mandated. And at the beginning of this meeting, Commissioner Lutz made a comment about, these are important things. And for those of you that have not watched the YouTube of those workshops, I apologize for the acoustics, because it's, it's pretty bad acoustics, but it's very informative. And with both of these groups, the volunteer fire departments and the veterans, it was acknowledged that what the services that they provide, although not mandated, something that we absolutely have to provide as accounting, are very worthwhile services. And so, we're trying to come up with ways to be able to interface with them and help promote them providing their services, and how we're going to be able to fund it at the county level. And I got, let me just take the volunteer fire departments first. I thought Commissioner Valoo did an excellent job in walking through a number of the fire departments of where they are economically right now with regard to their resources, and how much money do they have to run their operations? And I was surprised, and pleasantly surprised, that most of them have enough money to run their operations for at least another two years, maybe three, without, without us funding anything, which gives me a sigh of relief that we're not throwing anybody in the grease here, okay? But at the same time, some are very, in very significant need, short term. And so, one of the things that, that I heard, and, you know, sometimes you think you hear something and you kind of misunderstand here, but I think what I heard is that most of the fire departments have planned these contributions to be in their budget. But if, even if we did not make those contributions, what I'm hearing is, they can still keep the doors open, but there's a need out there. And one of the things that I mentioned as a possible solution is, rather than coming up with cookie cutter payments to the volunteer fire departments, that we come up with a fund, like a contingency fund for volunteer fire departments, and do it, and award those funds out through the year on the basis of need. And there seemed to be, I think, pretty much universal consensus that they would be very receptive to doing something like that. And in order to do that, what I foresee, it's almost like grant applications. They have a need, they file an application with us, and then we get a chance to review the need and see what we can, what we can come up with to try to support them. And so, for the budget, as we start these, these other workshops, my thought would be to see if we can find an amount of money that we can put in there as a contingency, and then let the various volunteer fire departments who need the money come to us and apply for. It was interesting that a number of the fire departments are financially self-supporting, which is good to know. But if we're going to, if we're going to try to change how we interface with them, it seems like to me, a good basis would be to do it on some sort of needs test. That's on the volunteer fire departments, and I opened the discussion up on that, and I'm gonna talk about the volunteers, the Veteran Services here in just a second.
Yes, my question on that, or concern would be, is that you're essentially rewarding those that aren't doing as good a job. I mean, if, if, huh, or Divide, take Divide, very well-run, very well-funded fire department, they don't need the money, and say, CenterPoint, another well-run fire department, but say they need the money. I mean, that they haven't, haven't been a successful fundraiser. So, just because, you know, it's kind of like you're giving the money to those that haven't been as successful at the fundraising, and maybe it's because of their demographics, and maybe it's because they don't try as hard. I mean, I don't know the reason, but you're rewarding those because they, because CenterPoint, and I'm just picking it out as a name, they need it, whereas, but they need it because they haven't been a successful fundraiser, and who knows the reason for that?
They're all a little, one of the things that we talked about is that CenterPoint's already looking into forming an E S D, which, you know, would be a while before they'd ever see any money from that. But Divide, as the example you used, wouldn't do any good doing an E S D. So, their needs are different, but they have a great fundraiser on the other hand, a very successful fundraiser. CenterPoint has one that's probably not as big a deal, so.
I think what we need to look at is the near future and then down the road. Some of them looking at E S Ds for down the road. That's not gonna help them a lick this next year.
We shouldn't change anything on, I think, this year.
I, I can tell you another one that's well-run, Mountain Home, and they have an E S D. Well, they bought a half a million dollar truck last year, or they approved it through their E S D, and basically, all their E S D money goes towards that truck for the next ten years. And so, and now they're not having a fundraiser because of COVID. You know, they, a lot, most of them aren't having these good fundraisers and stuff because economic times. They don't want to ask their neighbors and stuff for, to donate in these downtimes and what have you. So, and then, so you take away that forty thousand dollar fundraiser, some of them bring in, and then you take away twenty-five thousand from us, they're stumped, some of them, even though they're well-run, you know, this is a tough time, this next year, so we're going to have to do something. And whether it's on a contingency deal or whatever, we are going to have to do something.
But, but there is some truth to what Commissioner Lutz is saying.
Sure.
But in, in a time of scarcity like we are right now, we want to make sure that these volunteer fire departments stay open, that they keep providing the services. What they do is so important to this county. But at the same time, if we keep handing the money out the way we're doing it right now, people that don't need it. And so, we're in the position of having to cut other services, and cut other budgets, possibly raise taxes, to give people money that don't need it. And there's something that kind of is inconsistent about doing that.
Well, I think, I think it's a good, good plan to not do cookie cutter. Number one, make sure we support the volunteer fire departments as needed, the word need, and that's for, therefore, they should come to the court and show what their need is, and us to have some fund that we think is appropriate, that's set aside for that, so. I, I think it was a good, good, long discussion at that whole thing, so, and there's lots of variables, so, I think, I think need-based is the way to go.
And I'd ask most of them to do that, send in what they need.
Well, they gotta do that, yeah.
Yeah. I haven't got anything yet, emails or anything.
When they need the money, that'll come forward.
Yeah.
I know, but, but here's, here's what I would like to see, and it's, it's a little bit like grant applications, which we've all become familiar with the process. I would like to see maybe the last year or two of their financial statements, the compilations that they do. I'd like to see at least year-to-date income statement, to see the money's in and money's out, to see what they are, and I would like to see some court of, some sort of application that explains, we need new tires for our fire truck, or we need, we need this, or we need that, just like we do with road and bridge. You come to us and tell us what you need, and, and we give it to you when we can, and hopefully you understand when we can. But, so that we have a little bit more formalized process and get to know what actually goes on in these VFDs.
Well, if, if it's gonna run the way we're talking about, this proposal, there would, I would think, need to be a cap on the amount of money kept in that, in that line, I would.
I understand.
And a cap that goes to each fire department. I mean, and I think that we have erred on one size fits all too much. I mean, some of them cover huge geographic areas, some have very small, and.
And some have a wealthy donor base, and some.
Right, that's right.
But the other thing that no one has talked about, as I've heard, is the eight hundred pound gorilla, which is the city of Kerrville across the street. We pay them a billion dollars a year for firing EMS. One point two million for firing EMS.
It's almost one point three.
You know, about to be more, and that contract's coming up, too. And to me, it's a little bit, I have a hard time just, you know, continuing that, which I don't see, and I'll, we have no alternative for next two years, I believe.
No.
We have a contract for two more years.
Yeah, but that.
But what a great time to be looking for grant money from federal government to do our own EMS. I know it's expensive, but.
It's not expensive, it's a matter of doing it.
We'll do that pretty soon again.
I've looked at that twice, and it, it's not a good picture.
It's not, right.
I'm glad to look at it again, but it's, it's a, I just think that we, you can't just carve out the volunteer fire departments and figure out how to redo that unless you bring the city of Kerrville into it, because it's under the same budget.
Because there are regions that the city provides fire services which are not provided primarily by volunteer fire departments, which are outside the city. That's in our agreement with the city.
But they have a primary, there are certain areas that are not government voluntary.
Yeah, they're.
They're primary in certain areas.
Yeah, they're, city is primary in certain areas.
Well, we have mutual aid agreements, so. We have mutual aid agreements.
No, forget that. If. No, forget that. If, I'll be very specific. Where I live is not in the city, but our primary fire protection firefighting is from the city of Curville, not from Center Point. Center Point is secondary. So there's a region all the way around the city that the city, in our agreement with them, is the primary firefighting service for the county.
Well, is that something we can review?
In two, three years. We have a 10-year agreement.
So you're talking about the area covered.
Okay.
Thought we looked at that.
You know, I mean, that, that could be adjusted off.
Well, it can be checked, yeah, it can, it's going to be up in two years. But it also includes firefighting and EMS. So it's, it's complicated.
Precinct 1 probably has the most people covered by the city of any of the precincts, so. So I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to have everybody covered the way they are right now and I'm happy to. Now, some of the odd things that we found out in these meetings are that, for example, if there's a fire out by Garvin Store that we have, city of Curville, if they're involved in it at all, they have to get in touch with the people in Comfort so that they have a department that's completely covered by the certifications they need to have a contract with, so they go way the heck out there rather than calling Mountain Home, Divide, and so on. There's odd things in these agreements that probably should be reviewed and corrected because that doesn't make any sense to anybody. I don't think. And Chief Danny even admitted, he don't know where the heck Garvin Store is.
Well, now I asked him about Criders. You know, when I mentioned, what if I have a heart attack at Criders, where's Criders?
Oh, that was it. It was Criders.
Yeah, you know, they're going to call.
You didn't know where Criders is. Well, if you don't know where Criders is, you sure don't know where Garvin Store is.
Yeah.
Guaranteed. Anyway.
Yeah, you're right.
But, I mean, he, he's doing a great job for the city and, and I'm all for all the firefighters in all those places, so.
Now, let me address the veteran services for a minute. That was a very informative workshop and very well-presented and researched by various individual and veteran groups. One of the upshots of all that is just the sheer economic impact of the veterans community. We have about 5,000 veterans, they said, in the county, which account for, listen to this number, folks, $100 million cash influx into this county. That's a huge amount of money. Yes, they're, they're not a mandated service that we provide, but they are our veterans. And the counties are picking up, trying to take care of the veterans because they're not being taken care of at other, other levels. But that's a tremendous contribution that they make. I did ask very pointed questions of, of several of them about, if we don't have the money to fund it this year, where do we get the money? And I was given basically three responses. And those of you that were there will remember these responses. One was a discussion about raising taxes and they would be amenable to raising taxes. Well, you should have seen the horror on our faces when they suggested raising taxes because that's not the way we want to do this. But it is an option. Another option that they gave us was grants. And kind of like we do with our crime victim services, we've been running that on grants. That's where that money comes from to provide that service. And that service, by the way, is mandated. It is required. But the trouble with the grants is you've got to delay. We won't be able to get any grants for this coming fiscal year. So it'd be, you'd have to put it off a while to be able to do that. And while that's a great suggestion, it doesn't answer the immediate need. And we talked about the, the economies of scale and that if we close it down this year and try to start it up again next year, we're not going to have, it's going to cost us a whole lot more to shut it down and start it back up. And then the final, I thought probably the most insightful recommendation I had for how to fund it this year came from Paul Zollin, who was the guy sitting on the front row. And he got up and said, if, if we have rainy day funds, is this a year where we could actually use rainy day funds to keep this department open in order to give them time to be able to get in the grant cycle? Which I thought was spot on. I think that's probably where we're looking at with the veteran services, is to be able to draw down on our fund reserve to fund them for the year, to give them time to get in and start making their grant applications and get in that grant cycle, just like crime victims. But those were my takeaways on veterans.
And the grants they're applying for is the Texas Veterans Commission. Is that where we would go?
I believe that's the name of it.
I think that's what they were talking about.
Yeah.
And, and Mike Kegel has dealt with them a lot. He said that they're very amenable to helping and there's a lot of money in them.
That's right.
And that was very encouraging.
So this would be a stopgap?
Well, you know, we have a lot of good programs in Kirk County and many of them are represented right here in this room right now, department heads and what have you. But this, our VSO is quickly becoming one of our flagship programs, recognized in the community. And I'm not for pouring any more money into it, but we've got to keep them going. Those girls have done an outstanding job.
I think we're saying we're not, we need to look at the total picture for the budget rather than say we're not putting more money in. He may decide to more, put more money in.
Additional.
As opposed to putting it someplace else. We haven't looked at the other departments yet.
I agree.
So therefore.
Right.
Yeah. I think it was a good discussion. It was a non-decision thing, but it was understanding the, the value, the needs, and that's what the workshop was about. And I thought it was a really, really good workshop. Both of them were good workshops.
Educational.
Well, I'm, I'm 100% for, for keeping them, but I don't want us to mix apples and oranges in something that we're not required by law to have versus something that we are also.
I think it started with, start with what's mandatory.
Yes.
Okay. And then you go from there.
But I think what's required is, becomes very gray. There's the black part, there's a white part, and then there's a huge gray area. Animal patrol comes into the gray, library comes into the gray.
Youth and vet center comes into the gray.
Youth and vet centers in the gray.
Yeah.
Paved roads in Ivory County roads in the gray. I mean, there's a lot of things that we have to do. Fire EMS is in that gray area. I mean, we're responsible for public safety, but, you know, how far are we going? You know, so there's a, a big part of our budget's in the gray. We have to fund all these offices, but we have to fund them at the level we fund them.
Correct.
Well, how do you put roads and bridges in that category?
Because you don't have to.
You don't have to pay roads.
Yeah.
We're not one of the only counties in the state.
Paving.
Versus gravel.
Not maintaining.
Yeah, but, you know, but we're one of the only, I mean, our roads are, I would put our roads up to any county in the state.
Sure.
And we have funded that department that way. So, you know, I think you have to be very careful of what's required because it's, I think we need to be diligent with tax dollars. If there's a way to fund something like veteran services through grants, I'm 100% for that. But you can't just look at, well, it's not required. There's a lot of things that we do that are required.
Stuff that is required has to come first as much.
Right. But, but I'm not saying that's a gray area as to what has to come first. It's not quite as.
Well, I, I think it can be, like, some things are mandated, like the judge says. Period. They're, they're clear. Other things are not mandated, but they're good to do.
Right.
Yeah.
You got to do what's right.
Correct.
But the whole purpose of what I proposed initially was to initiate and begin this discussion and this debate publicly with the taxpayers and, and with all the county departments, because these are discussions that we have to have.
And that's good.
The way that it, it really turns out is that having a VSO is an investment because, here's an example. There was one veteran that was getting $1,500 a month for, whether it was, I don't remember what it was for, disability, whatever. And, and the office across the hall was able to find out that he was actually due $3,800 a month.
Right.
That money goes into our county. So it really is an investment in, and the judge started off talking about this, that it's an investment in the county if we keep that office because that money keeps coming in. One guy got back paid 60 grand. That money goes in the bank here, it buys him a new truck, whatever, so.
Well, I said it, I said it at the workshop and I'll say it again. When we set it up, the VSO was based on, it appeared to be that if we created that VSO, that the revenue, additional revenues based on benefits that came into the county would be offset, that offset the expenses of the VSO. So, and the judge mentioned $100 million, yes. 5,000 people, if they had $20,000 a year, that's, that's $100 million comes in. We're trying to get, trying to be more specific, okay, on specifically what their function has been and how much real money came in because of their activities. Some of them they get, if VSO didn't get, some of that money would still come in, but there's been an increase because of it, so trying to quantify it.
That's true. And the purpose of putting it on the agenda today is for us not to drop the ball, have the workshops and not do anything about it, but to keep the dialogue going and keep it at the forefront of our minds as we begin the next round of workshops this Wednesday.
And that'll be a lot of gray areas. We'll have a lot of discussion.
Okay, that was just for information purposes. Let's move on to the approval agenda. 2.1, Pay the Bills.
Invoices for today, Kirk County, $226,385.49. The airport, $857.57. Adult probation, $458.40. Juvenile probation, $29,036.14. The 216th DA forfeiture, $266.98. And the 198th DA forfeiture, $245.87.
Who would pay the bills as presented by Elton?
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Budget amendments.
Just one today. We're transferring from non-departmental to IT for COVID-related grant funding, purchase of laptops.
I move for approval.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Moser to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. It's 4-0. Commissioner Letts temporarily stepped out of the room. Let's go to 2.2, oh no, 2.3, late bills.
There are not any.
2.4, auditor reports.
We'll see the graphs in front of you, the color-coded sheet. And where we're tracking as of May 31st, we've collected 86% of our revenues. A big part of that one that's been kind of questionable here lately has been sales taxes. If you'll look on the next graph down, we received $383,000 in the month of May. And the one that we were concerned about was June's because the, the sales taxes, they're two months behind, so this represents April sales. And you'll see we collected $388,709. So it was kind of shocking, but it is good. And so based on that, for the rest of the year, if we collect, I think it was $318,000 each month, we will make our budget. So that's where we're at, those revenues. As far as, we also looked at the fees of office. And again, we kind of peeked into the future. As of May, we needed about $205,000 to make that budget. But as of June, we had collected another, I think it was around $50,000 on that. So again, the revenues are all moving up. We're collecting them. On the out-of-county prisoners, there was questions about that. As of June, we had collected about $144,000, but as, or as of May, but as of June, that number has gone up till we collected $700,000 and our budget is $800,000. We did discuss it with Sylvia Foraker, who is the jail administrator, and she, that's about $20,000 a month for the rest of this month, which we would still have, I want to say around 18 out-of-county prisoners right now. For our expenditures, again, we're, we're lower than budget there. We should be about 66%. If everyone was spending money, you know, at a constant rate of even amount each month, we're at 57% has been expended in the general fund. And so that is, should be about 67% at this time. Any questions?
Better than expected.
Yes.
Good news.
Good for Kirk County.
Yes, very much.
Thank you. Good report.
Thank you. Monthly reports.
Yes. For May 2020, fines, judgments, and jury fees collected for JP2JR Hone, JP4 Bill Ragsdale, Environmental Health OSSF Department Director Ashley Batters, and County Treasurer, Monthly Report, Tracy Sola. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Letts to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Court orders.
We have the court orders from our June 15th meeting, 38127 through 38135. Can I make a motion to be approved?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the court orders as presented. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Information agenda, 3.1, status reports from department heads. There being none, let's go to 3.2, status reports of elected officials. There being none, let's go to 3.3, status reports of liaison commissioners.
Executive session.
Okay. Then that concludes the open meeting part of this. We're going to go into executive session. It is 11:18. And we're going into executive session. Appropriate action regarding personnel matter and 4.3A, information regarding airport economic development. And that is all pursuant to Texas Government Code. So we will be in recess for five minutes and come back into session in executive. Okay, it is 11:45 and we're coming out of executive session. And I don't believe we have any actions to take. So with that, Commissioner Scott will be adjourned.